Good evening. We're going to now have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd just like to welcome you all here. We're going to get started right away with the superintendent's report.
Good evening, President Dorsey, members of the board, members of the community. I've listed my activities for the last month. There are a few that I would like to highlight. I, along with other Marion County superintendents, met with Marion County Democrats and Republicans last Friday to discuss the devastating impact of House Bill 1499 and House Bill 1001. As written, Warren would be projected to lose over $6 million in lost revenue over the next two years, only second to IPS, which is projected to lose over $15 million. Board, we will ask that you join us in reaching out to our legislators regarding this issue, and we have some language that we have, that we'll send to you. Today, Warren hosted the Marion County superintendents. As a part of this meeting, Matthew Stewart and Commander Ida Williams presented their Take a Stand for a Safer Indianapolis campaign with us. I will pass out a sample of what that campaign goal is. Essentially, it's to connect the community with resources, people, and programs, and they want to use the Marion County schools to assist with that. Safety-related, I thought Monday's safety forum was a powerful evening of testimony and collaboration around safety for our schools and communities. We will continue to place a high priority on safety and engage with our parents and partners. Our next step will to be convene our district safety committee, which you will hear a little bit more about later this evening. On March 4th, I attended the WAIF, Warren Arts and Education Foundation basketball tournament. It was a great experience, once again, for our 4th graders, their families, and our staff. I think Sunny Heights was our champion, and Principal Brooks was our free throw contest winner. I also attended the sectional boys' basketball game that same evening, and although we did not beat Cathedral, very proud of Warren Central staff and our Warren police for creating a great competitive atmosphere. Last week, I spent some time in Columbus, Ohio, with Patel for Kids and the Ed Slater 21 Superintendent Summit. The focus of this summit was centered around the science of learning, the science of hope, and the science of belonging. And as we think about the challenges and goals in front of us, particularly attendance and K-3 literacy, the science of learning, hope, and belonging are a foundation to those successes. One thing that I couldn't help but take away was the science of hope, which requires goals, pathways, and agency. And when those things are not present, we experience anger, despair, and apathy. And certainly, the pandemic has put us in a downward spiral towards apathy, and I think we've seen that with some of our students and their attendance. So it's important for us to put goals in front of our students. It's important for us to put pathways in front of them and show them how they belong as a part of that work. Couple hot spotlights that I would like to communicate to us coming up. March 17th, in partnership with the foundation and our Walker Career Center, we have a breakfast scheduled for 40 of our community partners. March 18th, I want to wish our 16th Street Soul choir students, I don't know if they go by choir, do they? Choir, yeah. Acapella group, as they compete this weekend. March 23rd, we're having our Pleasant Run Open House to celebrate their renovation completion. March 27th, we are inviting our faith-based leaders to Pleasant Run for a luncheon. And I want to give a Warren Wool shout-out real quick to our HR team. This is hiring season. We have some who are traveling across the country to bring staff to Warren. You'll hear about that tonight. They just got here from another event. I want to give a Warren Wool shout-out to our elementary schools, who are doing I Read 3 right now with our 2nd and 3rd graders. I want to give a shout-out to Brian Long, who is the coach for our 16th Street Soul Singers. He does an amazing job. And Mr. Dorsey, if it's okay, I need to tell a quick story. I want to give a shout-out to Ally Summers, who is a 1st-grade teacher at Pleasant Run Elementary. And she has a new student this year from Haiti. And unbeknownst to her and the staff, this young lady has a prosthetic leg that she identified out on the playground. And the prosthetic leg was made for her three or four years ago, and no longer fit her. So Ally Summers did some research and was able to connect the family with a prosthetic surgeon. And once the story was told to the prosthetic surgeon, he agreed to do it for free. So he refitted her with a new leg. And right before that happened, and I didn't know they made these, Mrs. Summers went out and purchased a Barbie doll that had a prosthetic leg and gifted her that there. And I have some pictures I can send out to you, but Ally went above and beyond to make this young lady feel. She speaks four languages, none of them are English. But she is a delightful young lady, and now she feels more confident because she can get around a little easier. And that's my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. That was, that was good. That was really good. Hey, we're going to, we're going to start some things off a little, just a little bit different today, and from now on. And that is, we're going to start the spotlight right away. So tonight's spotlight is Lowell Elementary School, home of the Fighting Leopards.
They don't fight. They don't fight.
They don't, they don't fight. They don't fight. Oh, that's too, well, that's too bad. Ms. Kim, if you would.
This is why Christie's clicking for me. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Hanson, Mr. Dorsey, members of the school board. Thank you for giving us some time this evening to share a little bit about, we are not fighting. We are going to talk about being kind tonight, though. We're going to talk about being present, being learners, and being kind. So we know we have three initiatives, our attendance initiative, our literacy initiative. And we're going to talk a little bit about something that we do that aligns really well with our journey of a graduate. So we're going to start off with attendance. We know that attendance is important. We cannot teach children if they are not in school. And so we have worked really hard this year. We're trying to increase our attendance rate from around a 91% from last year up to 96, 97% this year. We've been working hard with lots of initiatives and really cheering on our students for being at school every day. So we're going to go through a few of those. We have, Lowell has a history of doing class meetings. We've done class meetings for as long as I've been there, and I've been there for a long time. And so, so we always talk about what those expectations are for all of the students at the class meetings. We work together, we're a team. We want to make Lowell the best school it can be. And the best way we can do that is by being at school every day. And so attendance is a big starting point from the very beginning of the year, trying to explain to students the importance of showing up so that they can learn and move forward. So we always start off that way. We always kick off the year with an attendance contest as well. And so this year, any student who was in school during our attendance contest for 96% attendance rate or higher got a Lowell foam finger. And let me tell you, those are pretty popular. And so they were all super excited when they got their foam fingers. We also have attendance mentors. We have students who are struggling to come to school every day. We have mentors in there in our Attendance Core Club. Those are great touchpoints that we have with students at the beginning of every day, at the end of every day. We want them to know that we're happy that they're at school. We want them to know that we miss them when they are not. And so those mentors have really been a positive thing that we've started this year. We also do classroom attendance incentives. If we see that we've got classrooms that have 10 days, the little sheet on the slide there is outside every classroom. When students, that classroom has 10 days of perfect attendance, they get a little prize. It's all those lovely prizes that our parents just adore, the slap bracelets, the little toe tags. But the kids love them. And so we do reward them for being in school every day. We try to recognize and acknowledge them. We also have attendance competitions. We will have one when we get back. We'll have the races on when we get back for the 4th quarter to compete against our grade levels, to see who can have the highest attendance rate. And, go ahead, sorry, talking ahead of myself. We also do quarterly attendance awards. These are awards that we also have done for quite a while. At the end of every quarter, we recognize students who have perfect attendance. Those of you that have been around Lowell for a while know that we have our bucket hats. And so students who earn perfect attendance for the nine weeks will get a pin or a button to put on their button hats. And then each year, they get to build those buttons, and those hats become decorated. And they get to take those home at the end of 4th grade. We usually see them back on Senior Breakfast Day. We also will do random attendance drawings and prizes. If we notice that we've got a classroom that's got perfect attendance or a grade level that has great attendance for the day, we'll stop and we'll surprise them. We've had 4th grade, or 4th graders really have been leaders this year. They've had several days where they've had perfect attendance. So we've gone into the cafeteria, and we've done some cheers with 4th grade. We've taken pictures, we've put it on social media just to celebrate them and let them know that we appreciate them coming to school every day. We also have our family liaison, who is really working hard this year to communicate with families, to reach out to families to see what is, what's hindering them from being at school every day, and to provide support as much as we can so that we can get our kiddos in and get them in classrooms. Our K-4 literacy, again, we are trying to reach that 50% or increase by 10% with our conditional growth percentile. That has been a focus from day one that we've talked about with all of our teachers and our students. We've got a lot of initiatives that we've worked on and things that we've done throughout the year to try and help parents and others understand our new way of teaching reading. I keep forgetting you can't read my mind. We have brain-based literacy. We are really fortunate in that we have a large number of teachers that are already trained or are currently in training for brain-based literacy. We have 15 teachers trained right now. That's about half of our teaching staff in or in training in brain-based. Our teachers are all in, they love the training. They are, I am so proud of them because they are trying so hard to implement and learn new things. We have veteran teachers that have been teaching for 20 years, and this is, or more. And this is a whole new style of teaching for them. But they are, they're excited about it, they are trying new things. And so we really appreciate their commitment to that program. We had Family Literacy Night earlier this year. We went about a way where we, kids had a passport, so they got to visit all the different stations that we had. Each station really was set up to not only get students interested in what they were doing, but tried to teach parents some of the different ways that we're teaching reading this year so that they can follow through and understand, because none of us were taught that way. So we're trying to also communicate that with families so they understand when things are coming home, what it is that we're doing at school. We've also given mini book giveaways. Well, we have, we have many, classroom libraries are stocked, and we've got a lot of books at school. We want to make sure that our students have books at home as well. And so we try to do book giveaways definitely before we go on break. We do book giveaways anytime we have an event as well, to try and build up those family libraries. We celebrated Read Across America last week, and we had all kinds of fun things that the kids got to do. The teachers read their favorite picture book to them. We had guest readers that came into classrooms and read to classrooms with the students. They were able to bring their furry friend so that they could read with their furry friend during the day. And students also dressed up as their favorite book character that week. This next quarter, we are going to try and do One Book, One School, where we, as a whole school, decide on a book that we're going to read together and do some activities together with that. We're hoping to have students help us vote on the book that we want to read together, just as a whole-school initiative, where we're all reading the same book, having some of the same conversations and activities. And then for our journey of a graduate, we're going to talk a little bit about our Lowell Kindness and Justice Challenge. We have done this for many, many years. It really is a, it's a national initiative that was initiated by the son of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The point is to carry on all the hard work that he has done throughout our country. And we try and do our part at Lowell by doing Kindness and Justice Challenge every year. To start it off, we do a kickoff. We have, we get students all pumped and excited because we want them to be invested in this. We talk to them about it's their responsibility to show kindness and just acts. They can earn a chain link. And then we build those chain links together to make a chain of kindness outside of every classroom. So one part of it is, our kids will take a kindness pledge, and then we look for them to do kind and just acts throughout the challenge and recognize them every time that they do. That is one part of it. The second part of it is really kind of teaching them how we give back to our community as well. So we also do sponsor some charitable organizations. And so we sponsored, this year, we sponsored the Warren Early Childcare Center. We sponsored Riley Hospital for Children and American Heart Association. And what we do for them, you can go ahead. We raise money throughout our challenge so that we can give back to our community and support those in our community who need it. And with the American Heart Association, we're really supporting people outside of our state as well. And so ways that we do that, we have a coin challenge. Some of our grade levels and kids get pretty competitive with this. There are coin jars outside every grade level. So we tell our kids to grab underneath the couch cushions and find coins, and make sure you ask your parents if you can bring the penny money in. And, and they will bring, they'll bring coins in every day to fill the coin jars. We kind of compete and let them know who's got more coins. And then they're able to bring those in. Friday is Spirit Day, so every Friday, students can participate in a Spirit Day by paying a dollar. We've had Hat Day, we've had Character Day, we've had Gum Day, one of the kids' favorites, Pajama Day, you've got to love Pajama Day, Slipper Day, Stuff Hannibal Day, so lots of different themed days so that we can get students excited about participating. And then all of that money goes towards our charities. And the staff, we love our staff, they love their jeans. And so, so they also pay money so that they can have jeans every Friday throughout the challenge. All of the money through our coin challenge, through our Spirit Days, and through the Staff Jeans Days, all of that money goes towards our charities. In addition to that, we do, we try to highlight and do many different acts of kindness for other community members throughout our two months and beyond. We always, we have, also have a tradition where we write letters. Our students write letters to veterans who are participating in the Honor Flight Program. Those veterans get on the Honor Flight and go to DC and get to tour DC. When they're riding, flying back home, they have mail time, and so they open up their mailbag, and they read letters. And our students have letters in those mailbags. It is one of my favorite things that we do. It never fails, every single year, we get communications back from veterans that have read letters from our students and are so thankful that they got those letters and appreciative of that. So our kids do a great job in telling our veterans thanks for their service. We also do Valentines for vets. So they will write cards and notes and letters to the veterans at the Veterans Hospital. And we take those to the Veterans Hospital so that they can share those with the vets that are in the hospital. We also try and support our Warren wrestlers when they go to state. And so we have students who make big posters. We had students this year that made a video cheering on our wrestlers. And we get those to Jeannie Harris, who then gets those to the wrestlers. And so we also, we try to teach the students that it's not just about us and our building, that it's bigger than all of us, and that we want to support everybody. We were very fortunate this year in raising funds for our charities. We were able to raise $2,000 for the Warren Early Childhood Center, over $2,300 for the Heart Association, and $1,200 for Riley Hospital for Children. On top of that, we always challenge our students that we want that chain of kindness to go around the perimeter of our gym. We have a really big gym now. However, they were so incredibly close. We had hundreds of acts of kindness that our students did over this two-month period. This is our 19th year of doing our K&amp;J Challenge. We've supported many, many charities over the course of those years. We've supported schools within our district over the course of those years. And we've been able to raise over $75,000 to all of our organizations in the 19 years that we've done that. So we are super proud of that and appreciative of everyone for helping out. Now, we know that as, as one school in our district, we can do a lot. However, we feel that we would like to bring you in on our kindness challenge. So I'm going to ask my 4th-grade students to come forward, please. So we are going to invite you to join our kindness challenge. Our students are going to lead you in the challenge. We're going to see if we can do this. They're going to read two lines, they will pause, we've practiced. And then they will give you time to read those two lines, which are on the screen. Maybe? Can you click on the X? I love it when I can tell Christie Hartman what to do with technology. So we're going to let them begin. We ask that when it's your turn, if you will repeat those two lines. Be the kind of kid, the kind of kid who's kind. Does nice things and helps a lot and leaves no one behind. The kind of kid who asks for kindness every day. The kind of kid who asks for kindness every day. Who asks for justice everywhere. I promise I'm on my way. You ask for justice everywhere. I promise I'm on my way. Just the kind of kid, the kind of kid who's just. Good job, boys and girls. You guys can wait right there for a minute, okay? Just one last thanks. I do want to shout out Ms. Hartman here. We have been fortunate for many years to selfishly have Ms. Hartman at Lowell and, and loved having her. We get to share her with the district now, which is a gift to everyone at the district. But she does still help us immensely and has from day one with the Kindness and Justice Challenge. She helps us organize it. This is, this is kind of our baby at Lowell. It means a whole lot to us. I do want to give a shout out and say thank you, Ms. Hartman, for all that you do to help us with the challenge. Well done. And I want to say thank you to all of our students, all of our staff that pitch in and really commit to this every year as well. And parents who wouldn't be able to make this happen without your dollars and coins and, and commitment to helping students learn how to be kind and show other kindness as well. So thank you, parents, as well. Thank you very much.
Ms. Kim, thank, Ms. Kim, thank you for bringing such, such wonderful kids to us.
Aren't they fabulous? We like them a lot. Hey, guys, can you stand here? I think they want to shake your hand. We are going to give you a Lowell, we do a Lowell pin, a Kindness and Justice pin for our hats every year, so you're all going to get a pin for your hat. But you don't, some of you have hats. I'll work on that.
Okay, that was, that was very good. That was very good. Our next order of business will be our Warren Central Student Representative, who is not here today, but Dr. Hanson will speak in her behalf.
Kavay sends her apologies for not being able to be here this evening, but she did provide a report. I'm reminded that one of the things that we try to instill in our students is voice and choice. And Kavay is taking advantage of her new platform to express her advocacy for herself and for her fellow classmates. Good evening. I hope everyone is having a great day. I'm going to discuss some issues with curriculum, Wi-Fi, and positivity at Warren Central. So Kavay goes on to share that they would like to see more current events in their discussions in the classroom as well as more advanced books. And I will share with you, Board, this evening that Ms. Taylor, Principal Taylor and I spoke on the concerns and ideas that Kavay has brought to us this evening and how that can be, how they can collaborate at the building level to make some of these things happen. There is a, a question about Wi-Fi in the building, and I know I've had some conversations with board members around Wi-Fi. With that, our CTO, Mr. Schroeder, and Principal Taylor have had those conversations. There are some capacity issues that we are challenged with. It is an old high school. There's a lot of concrete at the high school, which creates limitations on, on cellular. Students do have access to the student Wi-Fi network, so it's not as if they don't have it. They're wanting it through their cellular phone or through, through Wi-Fi. She goes on to say that they would like to see more positivity in the, in the school, just around encouragement. I think that speaks to the science of hope and belonging that I referenced earlier. She would like to have more opportunities for her and her classmates, her peers, to express themselves. She goes on with some ideas of, of painting and how they might be able to add some vibrancy to the building. They are pleased with some of the changes that they are seeing in the building. They are thankful and grateful that their voices are being heard. They love Mrs. Taylor as their new principal. Quote, "We feel she really cares and she interacts with the students on a daily basis." No comment on that one here. But that, that is her report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's neighborhood advocate and Brendan Edwards is also not here.
I think you're going to say. I'm going to pinch it for him as well.
Dr. Hanson will say a few words for him as well.
Brendan would like to remind everyone that the Neighborhood Grant Program application is now open until Monday, April 17. Applicants may request grants up to $10,000. The details in submission portal can be found and that, all this information is, is on our board docs. If you would like to submit a traffic complaint, there's the link to do that. I put in my Wednesday call today, this is good information for all of us. Post Road from Washington Street to I-70 will start construction next week. It is scheduled from now until November of 2023. They are completely rehabilitating and replacing Post Road. It will never be closed completely. Crews will work in phases to allow for minimal disruptions to the neighborhood. Commuter traffic should use the detour off of Midhofer to avoid construction, which Board, you know that that will have implications on us for Lakeside, the high school, and the Early Childhood Center. Local businesses and homes on Post Road will remain accessible at all times. Mr. Clayton and our transportation team are aware of this. They've already made adjustments in our bus routes as needed, and we will continue to work with the Department of Public Works to hopefully stay a week or so ahead of it at least so that we can make adjustments and communicate to our community the impact that that's going to have. And that is his report for this evening.
Good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is Board Correspondence. Ms. Rachel, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Business of Citizens Present. Do we have any green cards?
We do not.
Okay, good. Okay, next item on our agenda. Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is, is going to approve all items on the Consent Agenda, which includes the following. Approval of Minutes. Approval of the Financial Report. Payroll Claim. Financial Report Claim Register and Electronic Payments. Financial Report Years-to-Date Summary of Fund Balances. A Human Resource Report. Field Trip Requests. We've only got one. Our JROTC kids are going to the Leadership Camp in Bloomington, March 27th to the 1st of April. We're having to prove the permission to accept gifts and grants. It looks like Brookview, Liberty Park, Lakeside, and Warren Central High School received gifts and donations to the tune of about $25,000, $24,000. Change Orders. There were change orders for East Ridge, Grassy Creek, Hawthorne, Lowell, Pleasant Run, and Warren Central High School phases. We had no contracts. We had the use of a school property. And there were a plethora of organizations that were going to be using some of our, our facilities. There were no special events and no conflicts of interest forms. Could I have someone to move to accept the Consent Agenda? It was properly moved by Ms., Ms. Gloria. Yeah, Ms. Gloria. And second by Ms. Lashana. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Consent Agenda is approved. Oh, it's going to come up? Okay, good. The Consent Agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda are reports. We will have Mr. Bryan to talk about investments on people with Dr. Tierna Anderson.
Good evening, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the Board. It's good to be with you this evening as we spend a little time just sharing with you some of our initiatives with regard to the key areas of recruitment and retention. We wanted to just express and list the key board goals that we in district administration wholeheartedly support as well, and then some, particularly around recruiting and retaining and developing, you know, top talent, certainly with administrators and teachers, but also with support staff. And so we are very involved. This is a very interesting time to be in public education, as you know. You've probably heard me express at the Legislative Forum and elsewhere, the dual challenges for Warren Township with respect to state and national teacher shortages, as well as also the ongoing effort to attract teachers of color, which greatly benefits our students. And so we will do a little sharing along those lines this evening. Our colleague Pam Griffin regrets that she can't be here this evening, but she's definitely here in spirit. She's a very integral part of our team in HR. Contributed quite a bit to this presentation as well this evening. But I also have here Dr. Tierney Anderson, who joined our staff right after Labor Day this school year. And she has done a great job. And so the three of us really, really sink our teeth in this and, and I think you'll see that even though sometimes it can be easy to be discouraged, when it comes to this area with recruitment and retention, it's, it's also very exciting. And a lot of times in public education, we like to step up to these challenges and use them as opportunities. And so we're in a time period where all things, all options are on the table. And so we are experimenting and innovating with all kinds of different things, both short-term and long-term strategies. So without saying anything more, I want to turn it over to, to Tierney and take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the Board, thank you. So we have been really strategic about what we have been doing in HR this year. I want to start with retention because if you start with retention, you don't have to hire as much. If you hire people, you retain them. We don't have to always keep trying to fill positions. And so I really want to start with retention. We have been very strategic about placing weekly communication to leaders throughout our weekly announcements, especially around creating a sense of belonging in buildings. Because when teachers have a sense of belonging, when workers, employees have a sense of belonging, they won't always jump ship at the first sign of trouble. They want to work it out because they feel like they're an integral part of our system. New teachers have mentors and there's a full new teacher orientation. We have done a lot about around teacher and staff recognition. Principals are with their new hires for a 30, 60, and 90-day plan to make sure they're onboarded properly and make sure they are creating a sense of belonging for our new staff as they come in. And also this year, one of the new things that we have done is we created a stay interview. And we surveyed teachers who have been here five, 10, and 15 years. And so we wanted to know, why do you stay in Warren? What keeps you here? And so, and then what would you like to change about Warren? Because you've been here and you know us. So we wanted to gather their input so that we could continue to grow, get better, and retain our staff. And so that's a, that's a huge thing that we've done this school year. Around recruitment, we've had our own Warren Township recruiting events. We had one in the first semester and one in the second semester. We have increased our recruitment via social media, using Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn, and Twitter. We've been to various career fairs from Indiana State to IUPUI, to all pretty much the local universities that have invited us. But also sometimes we invite ourselves because we reach out to them instead of waiting on people to reach out to us. We're being, we're playing offense instead of defense. And so being forward-thinking. We just came from one tonight, actually. So yes, so being very intentional and making sure we're in the right place at the right time. Personalized notes and Warren swag to student teachers, having to build a sense of community with them. So now that they've done their student teaching here, how can we get them to stay? How can we, they now become our teachers of tomorrow? And communication to potential candidates. Whenever we go to a career event, a teaching event, I always follow up with emails to everybody that we spoke to. So we have everybody signing in. We have emails. I create a newsletter so that they know what's happening in, in Warren, how they can shadow, if they have time, if they wanted to drop in and be a Kelly sub. So just helping them through the motions of how to become part of our Warren family. Investing people with strategic recruitment and retention. You know, we have a goal of hiring teachers of color. And so first semester, we did have a virtual teachers of color listening sessions and all that information was mailed out, sorry, emailed out to the various departments with their concerns or whatever feedback they had for them. We had a book study open to all and that is going on currently. It is the Equity and Social Justice 50 by Principal Caffelay. Each building, we restarted their equity teams really hard in December. We're still setting the stage. We meet pretty much monthly. We're setting the stage and we're putting little increments in place. Now we're to the point where we are about to do our SMART goals. And then after we do our SMART goals, we're going to use a change method and then start to implement our work in each building, in each team. Again, we have the new teacher mentors. Recruiting, we have been hitting heavy lately with HBCUs. I go to Central State tomorrow. I have Jackson State next week. We've gone to Central State first semester. I did Tennessee State. Also, we, and that was virtual, and we also have done Kentucky State. And again, I'm still keeping in contact with all of those candidates and potential teachers that I have met along the way, sending out those communications to keep them in the know of what's happening in Warren. Creating HBCU partnerships, really trying to create a pipeline, not only for the schools in our area with Central State and Kentucky State, but even schools that are not in our area. Having us to be the go-to place for Indianapolis for their teachers. IUPUI Black Student Union, they had a speed dating event and invited me there. It was very interesting. I've never been to a speed dating event in general, but it was very good. I just kind of talked to them about education, what it's like to be a teacher, what it's like to be a principal, just about the education field and my journey in education. So that was very beneficial. Professional learning. We have the teacher pathways and we've been having presentations for the teachers during the pathway time. The Leadership Team Book Study Equity Warriors, I've been leading. We're on Chapter Four at this point. Team Leader Meetings at Porter Services, making sure that they have a piece of our equity too, so we're not just focusing on school building. equity too, so we're not just focusing on school buildings. We have to focus on our teams, Porter Services, maintenance, those types of areas too, because they need to be equitable as well. And so they need to be an integral part of the work in their division and their team. The Lawrence, oh, sorry, the Leadership Institute series of enhancing employee evaluation. We really did a good job of trying to make our evaluations not be a "I got you." How are we supporting? How can we be helpful? How can we, you're a good teacher, but let's make you better. Every teacher can get better. So we really wanted to be strategic about using our evaluation to help teachers get better. And then our partnership with Marion University, where we have teachers who want to get certified, not teachers, I'm sorry, support staff who want to be certified. And so how to partner them with a university, give them some relief on the financial aspect of it, and hopefully they come back and be our teachers as well. Re-examining and refining our practices, we're looking very strategically at our rubrics that we have for evaluation, new bus driver rubric, new bus monitor rubric, and they're also going through an equity lens in the process as well. Again, our Leadership Institute series, we have hard-to-hire stipends to provide a little extra incentive for those positions that we are having trouble filling, like multilingual learners, special education, those types of things. And also multilingual advertising, how are we reaching out to those who don't speak English? Being intentional about what's out there so they have access to what we're doing in Warren as well. We are creating teacher, we're creating HR partnerships as far as fellowship for black teachers, and that's through IUPUI, again, Marion University. We're creating a pipeline with, sorry, Kentucky State University. Really, they're trying to send us some teachers, they want some athletes from us, so we're trying to build a partnership along the way. Western Governors University, who also gives our teachers a discount, or sorry, or qualifies that discount if they want to be certified. IUPUI Black Student Union and the Indiana Association of Principals.
Hey, I get to talk about salary and benefits. Yes, well, of course, I'm one of the chief negotiators on the bargaining team and so we always strive to, to really do what we can to squeeze the blood out of the rocks to try and get the best raise as possible for our people. And that also has to do with providing the best benefits as well. This year, we did increase substantially bus driver pay to be even more competitive, also increasing, matching bus trainee pay to the starting pay of the bus drivers as well. And of course, we continued on with our 250 an hour retention bonus through ESAR this year, into this year, and extended it. One of my, as I say, you know, one of my favorite parts of this job is going to bat for employees behind the scenes with respect to benefits and retirement. We continue to try and tap our vendors to better educate our employees on their retirement and their benefits. This year in particular was interesting because we have steel benefit is our online enrollment system for benefits. We started at July 1 with our new employees and then this was our first open enrollment in this past November, where all Warren employees had to, luckily, we were able to have in-person counselors and advisors to help with that since it was our first go-through. But to be able to finally, as an organization our size, to get off the paper and fully automate benefits enrollment has been great. And all things considered, the first go-around was very successful. So that is nice and it really does help people really see, in addition to their salary, the total compensation that the board contributes on their behalf for themselves and their families. We also were able to piggyback off of what we agreed to in collective bargaining for teachers to all staff with respect to employer contributions to health savings accounts, which is a big, big plus. And for those who didn't, don't have a health savings account, they got the equivalent in a stipend. We've had a host of different stipends with respect to attracting different positions. For instance, a big one that's kind of innovative was the, using our ESAR dollars to attract seventh and eighth grade math teachers in particular, with a two-year commitment, $5,000 per year for a $10,000 total two-year commitment. We've also been making full use of the supplemental stipends that the board approved not too long ago for other positions involving special ed and, you know, math and science types of positions. So we continue to, you know, in bargaining, we increased the amount per hour for tutoring. And yeah, so that's really the main highlights. My part two. Yes. So what I want to point out here is all the various ways that we have just been, 10 times 10 ways with our communication. One of the things that we've done recently is we've struck a deal with LinkedIn to expand. We've always had a LinkedIn page, but it was limited to just those who follow us. But what we, with the package that we have now with LinkedIn, we can take the next step in expanding that and pushing out positions even more and attracting additional followers. And so that's a fairly recent development and we are going to be pushing that pretty hard for the rest of this year and going into the next year. One of the things that's also new that was on my addendum in my HR report this evening was a teacher referral bonus. I failed to mention that, but that is a bonus that is $250 stipends for any employee, not including administrators, who will refer a candidate that we hire. And so there's a Google form where the Warren employee answers some questions with respect to who they're referring. And then when they apply online, there's a place where they can indicate who referred them. And as long as those two things match up, we can provide a $250 bonus. And any Warren staff who refers teachers that we hire can refer as many as they want and get as many $250 stipends as, as they can, as they're eligible for. So that's our, one of our very, very newest developments and we're going to start, we're starting that right now, going into the hiring season, so. Real quick, I just want to reintroduce our staff. We have a great staff. As you can imagine in HR, every day we're facing, and payroll, we're facing all kinds of things just to kind of keep the district running, on top of all the other innovative things that we've shared tonight. And that includes, you know, with payroll, you can just imagine the hundreds and hundreds of bi-weekly transactions that get processed every pay period with just three people of the district this size. And we administer all benefits every day. That includes retirement. We also deal with ADA, FMLA, civil rights, all the alphabet soup of employment law every day, workers' comp, unemployment insurance. And so there's a lot, a lot that comes at this, but I will say that it tends to create a very tight-knit group when you're kind of in the trenches and just trying to, you know, to kind of keep things going. It's a great staff to work with. Finally, I just want to end on kind of a celebratory tone. And what you see here are just some examples of, through LinkedIn, on teacher, folks who got hired in Warren and how they feel about it. So, yeah, we'd be happy to entertain any questions right at this moment, if you have any questions for us. Thank you, Tierney.
I just want to say, I really appreciate the efforts that are going into finding diversity for our students. We really appreciate it, or I do.
Thank you.
I would like to say, I am so happy, Brian, that you have Dr., what's your last name?
Anderson.
Anderson, working with you and, and as Terry said, reaching out all over the place. I think that we're going to see some great results. So you're doing an awesome job. I'm so excited, you know? When I heard all of this stuff going on, I was like, wow, this is great.
Yeah, I love, I love checking in with Tierney every day because I continue to learn things from her background and experiences. And having her on staff has just, just elevated our game with respect to recruitment and retention. And she's right, you know, a big focus this year has been belonging. There's no question about it. We see it in the stay interview responses that we just collected, that when employees tend to stay, if they feel like they're part of a family and that they belong. We had several comments about how I really appreciate my colleagues, I like collaborating with my colleagues. And so that is a huge piece of retaining people. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I too. Brian, about, you can tell you guys have put a whole lot of work and a lot of effort in trying to get in this thing moving forward. And just want to say, I appreciate you and Dr. Anderson doing a fine job.
Thank you. You may have noticed recently, I've noticed the DOE is really promoting this, but right now, pipelines, educator pipelines is a big thing. And that has been something we've been working on for years, but that is, that is short-term and long-term strategies, multi-pronged strategies to grow our own. So when you saw those partnerships with Marion, IUPUI, in fact, we have a Marion informational session tomorrow and then the week, next week, IUPUI is coming. Because we like to tap support staff who have bachelor's degrees and want to teach. Even with WGU, our partnership with WGU, you could be a support staff member and actually go and get your bachelor's and then, and then work to become a teacher. But IUPUI has their district-based alternative certification program. Again, support staff with bachelor's degree who want to teach, have an opportunity. But then also secondary teachers with an emergency permit, it's a great option to get their valid teacher license. Marion University is a partnership where Marion, Warren chip in a third of the cost each. And so we have seven currently right now who are in various, some are working to be administrators, others are going through transition to teaching. So we develop these partnerships in multiple ways to tap people who are in our own community, perhaps even working as a support staff employee, to become teachers for us. And oftentimes, they do make some of the best teachers, those who, those who are Warren grads or are familiar with our community, so.
Did I or did I not hear you say that administrators and board members are part of that incentive for recruiting?
They are not, because they're already out there just beating the bushes and every day anyway, and they do it because...
I just like to commend you for the hard work. And one of the things that stuck out, because sometimes we do forget about our staff that we already have, because we're so busy looking for other people and they feel, you know, shaded or neglected. So I really appreciate, one of the first things you said, that you're working on retention.
Yeah.
Because that's going to reduce your hunt, you know, to be out into these schools and communities. And I told Dr. Hanson, you might need a chaperone. And that would be me. Thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
I do want to ask one question. In trying to retain, you know, our employees, one thing that I'm interested in, if they have some concerns or can they voice their concerns without feeling of retaliation or punishment? I mean, where can they go? What can they do? Because sometimes, you know, employees do have concerns, but they're afraid of retaliation, you know, or something bad is going to happen if they voice their opinion. And that's not good, you know? So how can, how are we addressing that?
That's a great question. I'm approaching my 10 years in HR and I joke sometimes that sometimes you feel like a priest because people come and... I'm very accustomed, and so is Tierney, in her short time with us and Pam as well, we're very accustomed to people reaching out. It's a big part of HR, is meeting with people and providing a safe environment. We will never condone retaliation. In fact, it's in our board policy, you know? Anybody who comes forward and complains shall not be retaliated against, so. So if we are in a formal investigation, whoever is involved in that will have to be warned that you cannot retaliate. But we get a lot of folks that just come in who want to just get something off their chest. Sometimes we'll just ask them, you know, how would you like us to proceed? Some people just want someone to know and they're done. Some people do say, you know, I'm comfortable with you going to the next stage. But we do face that in HR all the time. And so we try to make it very, so we have to be very careful of who we talk to and make sure that we honor that professional confidentiality as well, until it's appropriate to, or until they give us the, they allow us to go forward and try to. Sometimes that may mean like, oftentimes, you know, managing people is tough, but a lot of times in HR, one of our big jobs is to work with our supervisors to help them just better manage people. And we talk about how HR allow us to be a support for you. Don't be an island unto yourself. When you're faced with these difficult personnel issues, come to us, let HR support you as a manager of people. Because it is hard work and it's not always easy and some of these issues are extremely complex and fact-sensitive. And so that's where HR can be a strategic partner with other areas of the district to help, help figure things out. That's what we do. Everything's figure-outable, as Pam Griffin would say.
Okay, well, any other comments? Hey, thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
That was great. Next on the agenda, college and career readiness and counselors report. Ms. Laura?
People are practicing.
I know. You've got, you've got it down, I have to say. You've got good practice. President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, board members, it is absolutely my pleasure to be here tonight as a proud Warren educator of 22 years to talk to you about our school counseling program and our college and career readiness activities that we are engaged in currently. You can't talk about counseling, you can't talk about college and career readiness without talking about the investment in the future of our graduates. Those jog skills, our student achievement and counselors are an integral part of that every student's journey in Warren. When you talk about counselors and career readiness, we're also talking about the well-being and safety and emotional health of all of our students. So we appreciate your investment in those crucial areas of our students' lives. So in my brief time, I promised to be brief tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our counseling program, ideal counseling model. We are recipients of the Department of Ed Comprehensive School Counseling Grant. And then talk to you specifically about our K-12 College and Career Readiness Initiative and continuum, and specifically Zello, which is our new learning platform that we're excited to highlight. We are very fortunate with your investment in our school counselors in this district. I brag a lot when I'm outside of our community about our investment in the school counseling program and the recognition of the role that these counselors play in our student lives. We have 37 counselors in the district, nine at the elementary schools, one at each elementary. We have 12 intermediate and middle school counselors at the Creston, Stony Brook and Raymond Park, four at each building, one for each grade level. We have 12 high school counselors at Warren Central with three at every grade level and department chair as well. At our Warren Online Academy, we have three full-time school counselors there, one who serves our K-8 online students, one who serves our freshman and sophomore online students, and then one who serves our juniors and seniors. And then our Renaissance Alternative School also has a school counselor full-time that serves the students 612. So what does that mean for us? Over the past several years, we've increased our school counselors significantly. Previous to that, it was not unusual for our middle school, high school counselors to have caseloads of over 500 students. And so, Dr. Hanson, when you talk about the science of hope and belonging and those relationships that school counselors build, it's very hard to build long-term lasting relationships with 500-plus students, right? So we are very fortunate. Our caseloads are much smaller than many of our counterparts around the city. And so our average caseload now of our counselors in the district is a little over 320 students. And while that is still a large number, it is a significantly better number to work with students. And when we have them over a long period of time, we can build those relationships. So we truly appreciate that ability to invest in those students and their journey and in meeting their needs as they travel from our preschool all the way through the high school. So when you talk about school counseling program model, we fit right in the middle of that journey of a graduate. Our whole role is to support our students and their success beyond high school. Counselors serve three areas. So we serve all students in academics, social and emotional learning, and then college and career readiness, which basically is making sure our students are prepared for success beyond high school, whatever that post-secondary goal is for them. And so our goal is to serve all of those students in those areas. We are recipients of the Indiana Department of Ed Comprehensive School Counseling Grant as a partner with Central Indiana Educational Service Center. And what that means for Warren is we are going to have some specialized support over the next year and a half as we continue to grow and improve our program. We will have strategic planning based on our data and what our needs of our students are and looking at that at a much deeper level. Support for our counselors, we're going to utilize the Indiana Graduates Prepared to Succeed dashboard, the new metrics that they're looking at and... they're looking at, and attack those areas that school counselors play an integral role in influencing those. It provides leadership network support, as well as new counseling support, as we talk about retaining and keeping our counselors here, providing them with mentors, ongoing and professional learning and development throughout that, as well as continued education and work-based learning and career, and I know you are familiar with our 3E grant, our explore, engage, experience, and all of these things that are coming together to align and make sure our students are the best-prepared, well-rounded, healthy individuals that are going to go out and change the world, as we know, Warren does. So one more visual here for you, so when you talk about the counseling and our services, you've got three columns, you've got your academic, your college and career, and your social-emotional, and those are the areas in which counselors serve our students, and I know you've also heard of tier one, tier two, and tier three services, so as a review, those tier one services are those things that every student gets, so in the counseling world, that looks like for the social-emotional, those lessons that we do, the bullying prevention, child safety, the academic planning that every student receives, the, those things that all students have throughout their experience K-12. When you get to tier two, you're talking about small groups and services for some students, so what that might look like in the academic is it might be small groups, study skills, working on organizational skills, a social-emotional might be social skills, or dealing with grief in small groups, or working with our 21st century scholars on keeping them eligible for their scholarship throughout high school, so they can be eligible for that to go on to college when they graduate. And then at tier three level, are those individual, more intensive needs, so that might look like crisis intervention, students that need referrals for more long-term sustained mental health services, or that intentional one-on-one counseling that many of our counselors do at that high school level, to get some of those students across that finish line for those credit recovery and some of those struggles that some of our seniors face. So sometimes when I talk about college and career readiness being a K-12, people will ask, well, how do you start preparing students for post-secondary and in elementary school? And it really does begin there. The idea is at elementary school is that we want to build an awareness, we want our young people to know about careers beyond what they see at school, what they see at home, or they read in books, we know there's just a vast number of jobs out there, so at the elementary level, we're truly just hoping to expose them to as many possible careers as, as we can. As we move into intermediate and middle school, we're going to start exploring careers a little more in-depth, we're going to start learning about ourselves, what we're interested in, what are we good at, how do those match up to some potential post-secondary options for that? As we go into high school, we're really beginning career preparation. We know that through our career center, through the CTE programs and credentialing, and many of the technical programs that we have, students can leave high school prepared to go right into the workforce. We have students that take dual credit, that's preparing them to be successful in a four-year institution, so we noted that that high school level, it becomes a much more individualized, really more specific post-secondary planning. And then we know that learning continues beyond, it doesn't matter how much preparation you have, all of that, we know how much learning happens when you finally get that job, right? So we know that that learning continues well beyond high school and throughout their career. So I want to talk to you about Zello. So we launched Zello, it is an online college and career readiness platform, we launched this in January, this has been about a year in the works of researching and talking to other school districts, different companies, to find something that could engage all of our students K-12. So we launched this in January, and I'm just really excited to share with you how that has gone. Since we launched in January, we've had over 8,000 students in the district engage in Zello learning at least once, many of them have been four or five times engaged in activities within the platform. That has totaled over 38,000 separate logins into the learning platform K-12 just since January, so I think that's a pretty good start and gets some good momentum. Our goal was that our students would have three learning opportunities with Zello this semester K-12, and those would happen through their Core Connect or SEL period, through e-learning days, and then through counselor classroom lessons. So some of those have happened, we still have some counselor lessons going on, I've been in the buildings the last couple of days, or the last couple of weeks, and I'll tell you a little bit, the one thing I've observed, when I've been in the classroom at the middle school level, with the counselors doing some lessons with Zello, as I'm walking around the room, kids are on their iPads now, they're fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders, they may not be following exactly what the counselor has them do, right? But in every classroom I've been in, and they've been on their iPads, I've not found one kid that left the platform and is on his iPad doing something else. So I think that speaks really well to that, it's keeping them engaged, and they're interested in the information that's in there, so I've been really excited about that. So at K-5, we're really looking at, like I said, the career awareness, self-discovery, and building those future readiness skills. At kindergarten through second, they explore this delightful little career town with Detective Jill, she takes them through, they play a game, and they're solving a mystery to find missing workers throughout the town, in the process, they learn about different jobs, you'll see this little about-me character that this theme runs throughout Zello K-12, but at this level, again, it's fun, it's engaging, every time my grandson comes over, he wants to play that color, that career game I have on my computer, so his endorsement is good. At third through fifth grade, we start going a little bit deeper, and so we're still building that awareness, but we're starting to have the students think a little bit about themselves and what they're interested in, and what their skills and interests are, so you still see this about-me, they have individualized lessons for each grade level, related to work and learning and careers and interests and skills and goals and all of those things. So at third through fifth grade, we're talking about, what am I interested in, what skills do I have, what do I want to learn, what subjects do I like in school, and how do those relate to some careers down the road for me? When they get to that career point, you can see that in this, they've, they're checking out here a family doctor, and then it gives them information, and again, these are just snapshots, but they can take their different subjects and click on the ones that they like, and they do well in, and it will lead them to different careers that are related to that. When we get to the sixth through 12 level, we start going deeper and on a much more individual level, so you can see here on their dashboard, there's quite a bit more for them to explore. We continue to have grade-level lessons at, related to, like, at this grade level, they're talking about jobs and employers, interview skills, resume, all of the things that you would expect to find in looking at that college and career readiness continuum. But at the secondary level, they start doing some self-assessments, they look at their interests, their personality styles, their learning styles, they start to develop electronic portfolio, they have careers, identified goals and plans, and one of my favorite parts of this is as they look at their plans for after high school, they start entering their experiences, so as they're going through high school, and they're involved in JROTC, or they're on an athletic team, or they volunteer, or student council, or they're part of a club, or they get a part-time job, they start entering all of these experiences into their portfolio, and ultimately, it helps them form a resume that they can then download as a PDF, send off, and it's one of the best resume builders that I've, I've seen, it creates a very professional-looking resume for them. When they're exploring pathways, the other thing I love about this program is it gives them every pathway, there's not just one, it's not just four-year, two-year, or that, this has options for them to look at military, two-year, apprenticeship, entrepreneurship, going straight into work, and so if they don't know what they want to do, they have all of those options which they can explore and see. Another thing that's great about this, when they do look at a career, it walks them through that pathway, that you might follow the beginning entry career, and then that might lead to this, or you start with this, and that, so it's a very visual opportunity for them to explore those. So finally, at the secondary level, when they do get to a specific career, this is just a snapshot, there's much more there available to them, but it talks about the demand for that job, it talks about their salary range, it will tell them specifically in Indiana, what the demand is, what the salary is here locally, it explains if that job is a good match, or an excellent match, or not a good match. We have students that say, you know, I'm, I want to be a nurse, and they do the assessment, and it says, it says I'm a bad match for a nurse, and you can take them back through, and it says, well, you said you don't like biology, that's probably why it's saying you're not a good match for nursing, because there's a lot of science and biology in that, so that part, for them to be able to go back and see, why is that saying that's good or bad, or not a good thing for me, is a great reflective activity for them. So I just wanted to finish up with, this is a little, I know it's promotional from Zello, but I think it does an excellent job of summing up why these conversations are important. This aligns with all the things that we're doing, creating those opportunities, those pathways, giving students options to explore what's going to be the best experience for them in high school and, and beyond that, and so I'm excited to say that it's just the beginning, because what will happen with Zello coming in the year to come will be, there's a family portal that will allow parents and, and their children to have these conversations at home, and they can see what their children are doing, it builds year after year, so they can see what they liked in fifth grade, and by the time they get to high school, has that changed? It's in Spanish and English, you can switch back and forth between the two, they're working on other languages, but it is very easy to switch back and forth to Spanish and English, and just really excited about the opportunities that this is going to provide our students, so I will share this, and hopefully the sound will work.
An engaged student is a successful student, it's as simple as that. You've got some kids saying, I know where I'm going, just show me how to get there, and then you have students who don't think there's anywhere for them to go. You have to be able to support both of those students and everybody in between. Get them to take a real look at themselves and see what that means for their future. When you say to students, to any student, your life is not a one-size-fits-all thing, let's take a look at who you are, and how you learn, and what interests you, and figure out where that can take you, and let's map out how you can get there. You're giving these kids a real reason to care. They see just how much possibility is out there, that's when the switch flips, and a student realizes they have a hand in their own destiny. And that changes how a student's going to view school, and learning, and their whole story. There is a difference in test scores, in attendance, is this positive culture around academics, proof you can point to, and say, these kids have the confidence to tackle the next step, whatever that might be. What happens when students are investing in themselves is remarkable.
So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I, I think you're doing an awesome job, but my question is, how can we involve parents more in the decisions of their schedules? Because I do hear some parents say, say that the kids make out their schedule, and then they're not happy with it, so we know that students sometimes don't make good decisions, and so it's important for those parents to be involved. I know I was very much involved in making out the schedule during their middle and high school years, so how can we do that in here in Warren? I hear parents say they want to be a part of that process.
Absolutely, and we, we always know, especially at those transitional years, when they're moving from intermediate to high school and that, that those are really important, and we have increased all those opportunities to have families in the building and have those questions answered about what classes are and that, and I think we continue to improve on that. Principal Taylor and Ms. Schering and I have had conversations about that exact thing in terms of when we're making decisions with students and having those conversations, how we include parents, if we zoom them in, if we make those phone calls, again, I go back to that, the, the smaller caseloads allow that opportunity for counselors to have those times, to have those meetings with parents, but I agree, we definitely need to continue to have that voice as part of those conversations, they're crucial. You said one question, I thought there might be a second one.
The second question is, is it possible when you make decisions, counselors make out the schedules?
Before they finalize those schedules, get a signature from the parent, or, you know, so that you know that the parent has had an opportunity to talk to that student?
They do, like, for, specifically for eighth grade, those are typically our first schedules that they do, they send that home with them, and they share that information, we send messages out in Parent Square, but then they have that opportunity, if there are questions, or if parents look at that and think, hmm, I want to make a change, they have that window up until spring break to get with that counselor and make those adjustments.
Do they have that opportunity in high school often?
Yes, they do.
Laura, do they have access to this after they graduate?
I, you know, that's a good question. I will have to find out. I would think that they probably have access for a certain amount of time, I know that the, like, many of the things, like the resume and a lot of those things, the profiles for, like, the student, they can download that as a PDF, so if it's something that they don't have access to, everything, so if I wanted to go in and see Tim Hanson's profile as the counselor, and teachers can access this, I could pull up your profile and print a PDF that shows your interests, your favorited careers, your resume, everything that you've saved in there, so students can absolutely save all of that.
Do teachers or counselors have access to student information in terms of, if I pulled all the kids who have this interest level or career interest, do counselors have access to that?
Yes, that, that's one of the other things with Zello that's amazing, is the amount of data and the reporting, and the ease of access to that. So I can look at, in a click of a button, I can see how many people logged on at Lakeside today, and then I can go and look and see who those students were, I can sort by classes, I can look at what are, it'll list, what are the highest-ranked careers, so we've had conversations at the middle school and high school level of, like, career cafes, right? So bringing people in, kids can have lunch with someone from a particular career, well, we can look at Zello and say, you know, our eighth graders, here's our top three careers our eighth graders are interested in, let's bring some people in to talk to them about that. So there's a wealth of data, to the individual student, to a classroom, to the school level, to the district, and it's literally two or three clicks to get there, and if a student is linked to a teacher in any way through synergy, then they have access to that, and then if we need to expand that for, like, in the middle school, for, like, our teachers of record, our department chairs, I can, we can manually add additional students, but it automatically syncs if they're connected in synergy with the teacher, they can see any student that they have.
I love it, I just have to say real quick, when we talk about the science of hope, you have to have a goal, a pathway, and agency, and everything was right there, created the goal, it created the pathways, multiple, and then how does the student play a part, and I love it.
Yeah, and, and the counselors have that opportunity to help provide that hope, right, and being able to have those conversations about, this is how you get there, like they said in there, you know, those are, those are crucial conversations, and I love that we can educate our families too, when we have the family portal open up this fall, to, I'm going to work with the liaisons to make sure that our families are aware, that they can log on and see what their children are interested in, and have those conversations as well, and they can explore what their child, colleges, and all of those things right there at their fingertips.
I have a question, I'm sorry. I know we're just rolling this out, but are counselors, meeting with our students, our freshmen, or sophomores, and really building their schedule, like, one-on-one with the student and the counselor, and are we looking at these pathways and connecting our courses into their interest?
Yes, so all of our high school counselors meet with their students at least twice a year individually, but they meet specifically in the spring to do that, mapping out their post-secondary goal, they're, you know, they're required to have a certain pathway in high school, as it is. They're, you know, they're required to have a certain pathway in high school as it is. So making sure they're following those requirements. And as we do this, that's one of the things I'm excited about, that they can now, if you, I'm meeting with a student and they're like, well, I have no idea, not really sure what I want to do, that student can pull up or the counselor can pull up their Zillow account and say, look, well, when you did this, here's some things you said you were interested in, let's talk about that. So I mean, like I said, the ease of access to it and that and the, it's just so user-friendly. It's been a great resource so far.
I just wanted to quickly give some kudos to the high school guidance counselor. I actually got a call this morning, maybe yesterday morning, from a guidance counselor at the high school, asking about summer school enrollment for a class that my daughter needed. So, I mean, they really are reaching out to parents and trying to make sure that they've got all of their i's dotted and t's crossed. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Ms. Laura, I appreciate you giving us that presentation. I'm tempted, I'm tempted to ask the question about, you know, the grant money that's supporting all of this. And I'm tempted to ask what that dollar amount is, but I'm not going to ask that question. And, but I hope that it can, it can support the robust and ambitious program that we're going to pull out in fall, you said.
Yes, so this, that's already part of this is ongoing that we've committed to. The grant will add on to our ability to use this. So the grant is actually going to allow us to specifically help our counselors utilize data and looking at needs and going through the steps to shore up our counseling program in terms of being recognized at the state level as a model program.
Good.
So it'll just build on this.
We got another comment.
First, I'd like to say, I really love this program and especially the data part, how you can bring in people to speak to specific, the areas that the children are interested in. But is there also a way that you can possibly create data to have a version of your success students or Hall of Fame kind of deal, even if the kids never meet them, just to say, well, these are the kids that went to school. So the kids can identify, oh, a Warren kid did this and I can do this. And if you have this Hall of Fame kind of thing set up and they could have something to, they can relate to, you know? Because unfortunately today, everything is social media. You got to do this, you got to do that, got to flash and all that kind of stuff. So if they have Warren kids right there, well, these are the engineers we've already produced. These are the scientists we've already produced. And something that they could see and relate to themselves, you know? And you could even track them, well, this kid went to this elementary school, this middle school, graduated from Warren. And, you know, something they can relate to as a part of the Warren family.
Absolutely. And we actually are also, one of the other things that we are engaging in that we've renewed is the Student Clearinghouse, which allows us to track students and where they go to school and where they're graduating from and that. And we have found in the past several years that one of the most powerful presentations that we can give to students are former Warren graduates that come back and talk to them about their experience at college or recently out of college and that. So I think, you know, having been here 22 years, I am amazed at the, as we say, the pride in this community and the alumni and the number of people that stay connected to Warren. And so I think that's a real asset for us, that we keep in touch with those students.
I guess everybody else said something, so I'll join in. Great programming, I like the way you had everything organized and set up. But with our mental health funding, a lot of scholars have expressed concerns, and I think we even heard last night about having a hotline or having a counselor or therapist at school that's available. In the future, are we going to make room for that? And I don't know the specifics to the funding that you're talking about, but is there a chance to create that for our scholars so they can mentally be prepared to be successful in this area?
So two things I would say to that is, one, we do have mental health services in all of our buildings. So we do have licensed therapists that serve our students and in some buildings, they have more than one, like at the middle school and high school level. So our students have access to those services, our counselors make those referrals, our family liaisons can make those referrals, our administrative staff. So we take advantage of that. I work closely with the, their regional manager that oversees all the Gallahue therapists in our school. So I, I know from my experience in Renaissance and at the high school for 18 years, that there truly is that support for mental health if the student and the family are willing to seek that. And it's very rare that we're not able to provide that because Gallahue, if for some reason they're not able for insurance or whatever, they will make sure that that student gets services somewhere.
Right, I know we have the therapists and counselors, but what I'm asking, like a crisis, because we have those, but just some of the students have expressed, like you said, it's an appointment. But somewhere specific designated that they know that if they are really having a mental breakdown at that moment, are their friends are aware of it, like that designated place or counselor that's trained to be able to go to, like in that moment?
Right.
Where appointments, they can't wait for an appointment.
And when we have a crisis situation, I was there at the meeting the other night as well, I want to assure you, if a student is in crisis, if there's any indication that a student is in an emotional crisis or a threat of harming themselves or that, our staff, K-12, are remarkable in identifying that. They know their students, they reach out to their counselors and that becomes an immediate priority. That is nothing that's ever left. All of our counselors are trained in crisis assessment. We utilize the same training and assessment scale that our licensed mental health therapists do. So they go through that training and renew that every year. So we all speak the same language when we do assessments. Gallahue can also, if for some reason a counselor isn't available, Gallahue can do an assessment on a student if there's a concern for their immediate safety risk and that. So we do provide a lot of support and counseling in that, but I assure you in those moments, if there's a student that's identified to be in crisis, they will make sure that that student's seen.
You're doing a great job. I just wanted to make sure, like, we know that information, but how do we make it more visible for our students to kind of know that, right?
Absolutely.
I know it's there, but I guess my concern is, how do we, as a committee, as a board, in the excellent job that you do, it's no good to have great services if the, if the scholars don't necessarily know how to get there and use it.
Right. No, I agree. And we know, I sat in a session today with the state of Indiana, and we know that the mental health concerns of our youth are concerning, right? What I would add to that is part of that grant and looking at our model is, we're going to increase the counselor's presence in the classroom. So looking at our role, and so the goal is that those counselors are in those tier-one services more, so especially at the high school level, that students are seeing the counselors in the classroom more frequently than that. Again, it's that awareness, they're visible, they're there, they know who they are and that, so.
Love it.
But I appreciate, I know, I know where your passion and your heart is and that's, we want to make sure our kids are taken care of in their mental health needs.
Love it, that's a great start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, thank you very much. Great presentation, very informative.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is safety update. Mr. Marcus?
All right, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, our Warren family. I want to briefly share with you the safety update for this past month. Our board goal continues to be to invest in the physical and psychological safety and security and well-being of all students and staff. And our strategic plan focus is to invest in relationships with families and the community, invest in efficiencies and environment. So those of you that were able to attend our second safety forum on Monday, March the 13th, and again, we did not have the attendance that we hoped for. I do appreciate all the administrators, board members, building leaders that were able to attend, and a few parents, but overall, we had 34 attendees. If you recall, our presenters, Matthew Stewart, which Dr. Hanson, I believe referred to earlier, the partnership we'll talk about towards the end of the, this presentation, as well as our principal of the high school, Ms. Taylor, Chief Woodland from Cumberland Police Department, Ms. Krista Frazier, Judge Jeffrey Gaither, Chief Pettis, as well as Jesse Bingham Senior. And then I thought probably the highlight of the evening, which has garnered some discussion, just some references tonight, is the student parent panel that we had there at the end. I thought that was, that was very powerful. So some of the next steps that we, we shared was, and if you recall there at the end, I had to be pretty emphatic to the point that we're going to continue to offer those opportunities, not only for our parents and our students, but opportunities for us to engage with the community and have tough conversations specifically around school safety. So those programs will continue, will continue to form partnerships, you know, as I alluded to earlier, with IMPD, the Community Engagement and Outreach Program. Happy to hear that, and that that's getting, that's going to take off, Stand Together for a Safer Indianapolis, presentation they had today, as well as continue to work on our framework, our Safe School Committees, District Safe School Teams, our Drug Free Committees, which will start this fall and create more opportunities for parents and guardians to serve on Safe School Committees. Okay, I want to give a brief update on where we stand with the MyStop app. So just to, if you don't recall from the presentation that Transportation did a few months ago, the VersiTran MyStop app is a, an application that our parents can use to track their student's location transportation-wise. Part of that, each student will have a unique username and password for safety and security. Once in the app, you have, you have secure access to information on where your school bus is located and the ETA at that assigned bus stop. Information is most accurate the closer the bus is to the scheduled stop. So we launched this app officially on Wednesday, February 22nd, a couple of days after Presidents' Day at Warren Central High School. We wanted to start with the high school simply because we knew that was going to be the most challenging. Some of the feedback that we received during this, this initial launch, which has been very positive, and I want to thank the work of Lamar and Logan on the website with that FAQ sheet that's, that's come in handy as we refer parents that have questions. But one of the reminders that we're sharing with parents and we share with our K through A building leaders, when they download the, the parents should select, after they download that, the Metro School District, Metro SD of Warren Township. Initially, some parents selected just Warren Township, but it's the Metro School District of Warren Township. Also, school ID versus STN. Parents should use the nine-digit STN as their username. Do not use the ID number, again, that's on the FAQ. If parents change, for whatever reason, if a parent changes the password, which currently is the date of birth, then they will need to contact MyStop directly in order to recover lost passwords. We would not have the ability if they change their password on their own to recover, because again, that's something that they, they set up outside of what we were able to provide. So starting April 10th, when we return back from spring break, all elementary and middle schools will, will be on board and we will launch the, the MyStop app officially pre-K through 12. Potential challenges, some of which we've already worked through. Each student requires a unique username, which is the STN and the password. Families with students, and again, this is important because I know some, some of you will get phone calls, families with students on multiple bus routes will have to use multiple logins. So if you have more than one child in your household, then they'll have to create multiple logins if they're on, if you have one child that's on the elementary route versus a child that's on a high school route, if that makes sense. Poor GPS or cell signal can result in delayed communication, leading to inaccurate time estimates. So in other words, what, what we're telling our parents is, don't necessarily go by the actual location on the app. Try to get your, your son or daughter out there a little bit earlier because if you have any, any type of issues with your Wi-Fi connection and there's a delay, then that bus location may be just a little bit inaccurate. So we encourage them to get them out just a little bit early. But if that signals, if it's uninterrupted, then it should be relatively accurate. The app is not a substitute, again, for the, for being at the bus stops. Students should arrive at their designated times. Again, I referenced the FAQ sheet, which is located on the district website. And then we also include our transportation helpline and email address, which we, we filled all those, those questions. Also want to talk to United briefly about the COPS grant. Those of us that had the opportunity to attend the school safety forum about a week ago on that Monday, they talked a lot about funding in the COPS grant. But the Community Oriented Policing Services Program was established in 1994. This federal program was originally designed to assist with the hiring of police officers. The COPS office supports safe schools by providing grant funds, technical assistance and resources to help deploy school resource officers. COPS provides nine different grant opportunities annually, and those application deadlines range from early March through May. I just want to briefly share with you how we use our COPS funding. So we really focused on four areas with the, the funding that we had this past year, starting off with district radios, and these are items that can be very expensive. And we were able to, through this grant, we're going to purchase 30 district radios, upgrade those with the, the goal of doing 10 per year, just so we can make sure that not only are we updating our radios on a regular basis, but we're able to exchange out those that, that no longer work. You can see the, the grant amount as well as the, the match. We also focus on the high school, specifically with the rekeen of Warren Central High School. That has been a pretty comprehensive project. We've been working on it all year just because there's so many doors, as you can imagine, in so many areas in the high school. I want to give, I want to, Steve Jewell and Josh Prevost, they receive, they should receive the majority of the credit because they've pretty much gone through each hallway identifying security issues that we may have. We've met monthly with the high school to make sure that the transition will be smooth. And we hope to get started on this by the end of the school year because it will be a pretty comprehensive project. And to change the locks at the high school, that's a pretty expensive venture as well. So this grant has come in handy, as well as upgrade security alarms throughout eight buildings, upgrade those security alarms. And a big thing is being able to expand our playground fencing. We are currently targeting five elementary schools and we will target other elementary schools, specifically the ones we're doing, currently doing construction that, we'll target that through construction funds as well. So that's a point of emphasis to make sure, you know, that our playgrounds are, are secure. Also, something we're excited about is, you know, the implementation of our Stop the Bleed program with, through Brian HR's good work on February 23rd, we were able to get 23 participants certified. Previously, we had 21, and we look at continuing to increase that number as well. And as we, as we're in the process currently of, let's just say, totally redoing our emergency guidelines, part of what we want to do moving forward is make sure we include those Stop the Bleed kits as a, as a resource as well in those emergency bags. So action items as we move forward, continue with our random safety checks, our bus scans, our new safe entryways at the high school, Career Center, Lowell, Grassy Creek, Pleasant Run, Early Childhood Center. Run, Early Childhood Center, and soon at Sunny Heights, our metal detectors, interdiction dogs, lockdown drills. As Adrian pointed out, on Monday night, we just completed sixteen of those here in the past three weeks. Our school safety framework, our vape detector pilot, our staff safety huddles at the high school, and student safety campaign, TV and radio ads at the high school as well. Mrs. Taylor's done a really good job of promoting the importance of a safe school and trying to get rally students behind that. I mentioned our emergency guidelines revision, our Stop It program, which will roll out in the fall of twenty twenty-three. We'll talk more about that at a later date. Security camera upgrades, and again, our safety checks for our events, extracurricular events at both the high school and the middle school. Can I answer any questions at this time?
I want to ask, your vape detectors, do we have, what are those? What do we have? Can you tell us about those?
So we purchased, we currently have two units, and yeah, you weren't sitting at our table at the, we had a lot of talk about vape detectors, right? But we currently have two units. One's at the C and G, the restroom at C and G, and I slipped my mind right now where the second one's at, but it's, both are in the high school. They not only detect the smoke, or potential smoke, or substance that comes from vapes, they also serve as noise detectors as well. We launched this about two weeks ago, and what we're learning, and I know this is, Ken's had a big hand in this in technology as far as providing support, but this is something that we've definitely received, quite a few notifications, not always connected with the use of vape. It kind of looks like, I would say, like a fire detector-type unit, and it doesn't take long, as we talked about last Monday, for kids to figure out exactly what that is. So we would hope in the future, if this proves effective, to add to the current ones we have in use.
I looked those up as you were talking about them. It's also going to be very hard sometimes for parents, for us, to really know who it was. So how are we going to monitor that when there's maybe five or six people in the bathroom, the alert goes off, somebody's notified? How do we know which person's responsible?
That's a great question. So placement is important. So we want to make sure the restrooms that we place them in, that we have great camera accessibility, and just like the, I believe, the school in Rochester, I think that's where they're from, that spoke on this at the forum, it's important to have that, because in the situations that, say, you have five or six students that walk out at one time, you just, administratively, based on that reasonable suspicion, you have to question students accordingly, and kind of go from there. But I think the positive in all of this is that, as Ms. Taylor presented the other day, we know this is a challenge, and now that students know that we are taking actions to address this, that hopefully that can discourage that type of usage in school. Yeah, we have concerns five through twelve, and that's why this pilot is so important, because if this pilot proves to be effective, then as we're able to get, whether it's COPS grants or Homeland Security-type grants, we can make those investments. And our students are ready for us to make those type of investments.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is legislative update. Ms. Julie?
Okay, I am going to mainly be talking about House Bill ten oh one tonight. First of all, everybody, except for Rachel, got one of these booklets, and she had one when she showed up to the workshop, she had one. And I went through them, and I X-ed out the bills that died at the halfway point. So you'll notice that there's a lot of them X-ed out. We're down to like, I think, seventy-some bills. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I also left at your spots two handouts, and I'm going to kind of go over these, so you know what they are. This first one here, it looks like this, right here. This one is the money that has been out there, that's been in the bills as to what you might get. So if you look down at the bottom, this starts out with two thousand, the budget year two thousand and seven, all the way down to current. The two thousand and twenty-three budget proposed by Governor Holcomb on January fifth is next to last, and then the twenty-three budget proposed by the House Republicans on the seventeenth of February is down there. You'll notice that there's an increase for the fiscal year twenty-four of six hundred and ninety-seven million, and for twenty-five, a hundred and seventy-eight million. That looks like a lot of money, as you look through here. But they've changed the way, the House Republicans changed the way they set up the line item for K-12. So they changed the term from tuition support to student funding formula. So we're not sure what that means, what all have they added in there, and that kind of stuff. We know that, and that's six hundred and ninety-seven million, a third of that, it's K-12, it's not K-12 public education, it's K-12 education. So a third of that money is going to vouchers, okay? So boom, you knock off quite a bit, right, a third of the money right there, which knocks it down to four hundred and sixty-five million. Now, this is roughly, this is just my numbers, so it just gives you an idea. And then, on top of that, there is an operations money that's in there now. It's a hundred and fifteen million, so you want to pull that off also, which takes you down to about three hundred and fifty million. And then, on top of that, textbooks are in there also. So why, I want to make, I want to make it very clear, we at Warren Township are in favor of free textbooks for our students. Our kids really need that, and our families really need that. So I want to make that clear, but I also want to make clear the implications that that does to us as a district, all right? In the House Republicans' budget, they don't really tell you what that is. They're including that in that money, but when we go back and we look at what the governor put aside for it, it was a hundred and sixty million, so I'm going to use that number, okay? So that is an addition that, in there, that, it doesn't have a separate line item to cover that money. So it looks like, right now, that the school districts will be the ones that pay that money, okay? And that's a hundred and sixty million, so you subtract that off, we're down now to about a hundred and ninety million. So everything eats away at it. So even though the six hundred and ninety-seven million dollars sounds like a lot, it's not, okay? It's going down. And then you have to think about inflation on top of that, okay? So the other thing about vouchers that is very important, they have a third of the money set aside for vouchers, and they have been increasing vouchers over the last several years. So when they started this in two thousand and eleven, for a family of four to receive a full voucher, you had to make forty-two thousand dollars or less. And if you made up to sixty-three thousand dollars, you got fifty percent of the voucher. And up to two thousand and twenty-one, which was the last fiscal budget amount, a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for a family of four is what they were going by. So they were saying that a family of four that makes a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars was allowed vouchers, okay? Now, that doesn't sound like poverty anymore to me, you know? They initially brought vouchers up to help families with poverty to be able to go to other schools, a school of their choice, if they wanted to. This year, they're moving up to four hundred percent poverty level, which is a family of four making two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. That sounds to me like that family should be able to afford putting their kids in a private school if they want to. And so they're pulling that money away from public schools. Okay, so now, I've kind of given you, in this, six hundred and ninety-seven million, I told you that included the operations, is money that's going away from us. So, and that's better explained probably on this other sheet, so I'll wait till we get there. But I just want you to know that the operations money is not only for K-12, for public schools, it's also for charter schools. So there will be a lot more money, a lot more people, school districts, schools that are utilizing that money. So now, if you go to this other sheet here, am I doing okay, Matt, so far? Okay, I've asked Matt to jump in if I start misleading you guys, because he has this expertise, he's gone to school for this, and he's got the ISBO group behind him, so he's going to help me out if I mess up. All right, so if you look at this sheet here, this one here, it shows MSD Warren Township on the bottom half. Fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three is what we're in right now, twenty-four and twenty-five are the next two. So if you look down at the bottom where it says total, for this year, we got ninety-six thousand, a little over ninety-six million dollars. And then next year, we'll get ninety-eight point eight million, and the year after that, we will get ninety-eight point one million. Now here's how the textbooks are going to affect us. If you take that ninety-eight, eight-one-six, five-sixty-eight, and you subtract from it the ninety-six thousand dollars, which we're currently giving, that's about two-point-eight million, approximately two-point-eight million dollars that we will be increasing, right? And that's, but of that, one million dollars will go to textbooks, which will leave us with one-point-eight million. So when you look at this sheet here, and it says they're giving an eight-point-five percent increase to K through twelve schools, we will be getting a two-point-nine percent increase that first year, of which, which is two-point-eight million dollars, of which one million of it will have to go to textbooks, okay? Does that make sense to everybody? Is that good? Okay, okay. And then the year after that, we will actually get a little bit less, we will actually lose, we'll have point seven, we'll go down negative point seven in the amount that we get. The operations, so we get so much money right now because of taxes, right? And that goes into our operations fund. We will still get money in there, however, it will be less if this, if the Republican budget goes through, it will be less. What will happen is that hundred and fifteen million I told you about on this first page that goes towards operations, that will be split between school districts and charter schools that do not make fourteen hundred dollars per student. So they will then go up, they will be reimbursed from that money to get them up to that fourteen hundred dollars. And we currently are at seventeen hundred dollars, so we will not get anything from them. But on top of that, like I mentioned earlier, we will not get our full amount that we would normally get through the taxes, because they're going to start kind of a sliding scale down on that. So it's bleak. We talked at our budget meeting about the operations and where we need to work on that, but it's going to be bleak, and it's going to be tight, and like Dr. Hanson said, when you combine that along with fourteen ninety-nine, it's going to be devastating to our district. So we will, as he said, we'll be losing about six million dollars. So when you're sent the information on who to send this to, do, please, 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 tell them that this is not good for our district, okay? Does anybody have any questions for me on that, or any comments? Okay, well, I'm going to, with that note and that, I'm going to let you move on. So just keep this in mind, this is why we need to be very active in this area. Yeah. Okay. You can ask me after if you want. Okay.
Julie, that was good. That was enlightening, and it's going to, it's pushing us into being more interested in what's going on like that. Thanks for the legislative update. Thank you. Okay, next, action, our next agenda item is an action item. We're going to talk, correction, 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 correction. Do we have any yellow cards?
Green, and no, we do not.
Okay, now, we're back on track. Action item, we only have one, we're going to talk about textbooks. Kate, you're up.
Thank you. President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I'm excited to be back with you. It's been a quick month. First, before I begin, feedback is a gift, and to Ms. King, I appreciate the feedback and look forward to a chat. Curriculum is, I love curriculum feedback from students, it's amazing. So in addition to that, I'm here tonight to seek your approval for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four textbook rental fees, which includes our science textbook adoption for K-12.
So moved.
I will second.
Give me a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ah, the ayes have it. It's approved.
Thank you. I deeply appreciate it. And Mr. Humphrey, I just want to say, Brookview, Stony Brook, Foreign Central, I'm very excited about the career and college readiness support we're working with with our students in conjunction with Ms. Buckright, so I won't say the class, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have discussion items, and we'll start with school safety. Mr. Marcus?
Thank you, President Dorsey. Dr. Hanson, members of the board. For discussion, propose the revision of Board Policy eighty-four hundred. The revision proposed for this policy changes the definition of training requirements for school resource officers, or betterwires known as SROs, as per HEA one ninety-three. The new definition of SRO requires The new definition of SRO requires the SRO to be a law enforcement officer with required training, timelines established by state statute. Additionally, in accordance with the superintendent's guidelines, the corporation will establish a safe school committee for the entire district. The safe school committee will be responsible to develop a district and school safety plan and apply annually for matching grants or matching funds through COPS and Homeland Security. Finally, the board may seek resources that are available to provide bleeding control kits to the corporation. So as I've gone through this, as you can see, we already have the majority of these things in practice in terms of just the standards and requirements we have for our SROs, as well as what we are, our philosophy and our policy, past practices as relates to our safe school committees district-wise, as well as within our individual buildings.
Any comments? Okay.
Are you working with Chief Pettis and the officers on this safety, you know, with him being the chief of police? You know, is he a vital part of this safety initiative that you're talking about?
Absolutely. I'm a little better looking than him, but he's much smarter than me when it comes to police matters, ma'am.
Okay.
Is he still here?
Any other comments? Okay. You're up again with transportation.
All right. For discussion, Board Policy 8600, propose a revision. For this policy incorporates changes to the definition of appropriate vehicles, as created through HEA 1251. Also, the approved uses for appropriate vehicles, the special purpose buses in transporting students for a variety of circumstances. This revision will allow the board to enter to a contractual agreement with qualified contractors for transportation of students or enter into a fleet agreement with a transportation network company or an organization serving the needs of students with a developmental disability. Finally, the board may authorize the use of special purpose bus on an appropriate vehicle to transport students, supervisors, extracurricular activities, McKinney-Bento, and career and technical students. Again, part of our current practice, we do contract with, with companies as relates to the transportation of our McKinney-Bento students. And this potential policy would expand the ability to continue to seek those type of services as seen appropriate by the board.
I'm sorry, did you say we already contract through?
Yeah, we work with some independent companies now. We're currently in discussions specifically with our McKinney-Bento, Lynn, Storm, and Chad, as well as Mr. Taylor, are in that process right now, trying to build a relationship with some potential new companies.
Any, any comments? Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Next on the agenda, reporting student progress. Mr. Ryan?
Good evening, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I have two policy revisions tonight, starting with reporting on student progress, which is Policy 5420. This really is a simple language update, really just providing language that says we will create administrative guidelines around the reporting of progress for students. Obviously, you know, it indicates that we give report cards and also indicates that we provide written notification of all standardized testing opportunities that our students have to our parents. Pretty basic, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Second policy is Policy 6250, ADM counts for the purpose of state funding and the verification of residency for membership. This is a language update, adds a definition for attending and enrolled. For ADM counts, it has changed a little, a little bit over the years. As you know, we have two counts. But a student must be both enrolled and attending for us to be able to count them for ADM, meaning that if they're enrolled, they simply have obviously completed paperwork within our district. But they have to be attending for them to actually be counted for our membership for the purposes of funding. Where that comes in, I saw there is some language today, legislative language, about potentially pushing ADM counts back to October, which would, as a side note, I think would hamper us in our bargaining ability just because of that timeline. But that being said, we work really hard to find students who may not have shown up or whatever in terms of that. And we can't legitimately count them for funding purposes until they actually start attending one of our schools. The other part it specifies is just what documents we require for enrollment. We can select no more than two or no more than three by policy. And it's a simple utility bill, a mortgage or a lease agreement for a standard enrollment. There are provisions for McKinney-Bento where we don't. Really, we don't need any documentation for that other than we just designate and provide that. Long story short, their language updates provided by IDOE guidance and happy to answer any question about those as well.
Just curious, why would we even ask for those items then? Again, maybe I missed it.
Why do we ask for?
McKinney-Bento. You said you don't, we don't even need to ask for that.
Well, we, if someone is homeless, they're not able to produce a lease or a utility bill or something. And in fact, those conversations need to be handled with care and sensitivity around those. So our attendance officers at our school, which are basically our administrators and then some of our attendance secretaries as well, we've actually been providing training to help them interact in those conversations. For some of them, they get a little bit more sticky. We find out after the fact. A lot of times, we call Mr. Taylor to help us as our McKinney-Bento coordinator as well. It's important for us to collect residency information for our students to ensure that students who we do determine to enroll from outside of Warren Township follow the proper process and have the right, meet the requirements that you as a board have set forth. And we can legally permit someone to come in. So students who have been expelled, we don't want, obviously, to come in. Students who have been suspended 10 or more days, students who have committed any violent acts, or, and one that's more commonly used anymore, any student that has excessive absences, we reserve the right to not allow in the Warren if they live outside of Warren Township boundaries. Especially everything going on with property taxes and that. We're really focused on making sure that we support the students who live within our borders, that they produce those documents, they come in regardless of their academic or attendance history.
Any other comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, public hearing before commencement of collective bargaining. Brian?
Yes, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I have, I have two policies with recommended revisions for discussion. The first one is Policy 3120.11. That has to do with the two required meetings that we have to have. One is the public hearing before commencement of collective bargaining. The other one is the, the meeting that we have traditionally. Traditionally, that first meeting is usually before the August board meeting, just prior to. The other meeting is the meeting before ratification of the tentative agreement. We traditionally do that after the WA has ratified it, but 72 hours before the board is set to approve it. The added features really are just making sure that we have an option to allow board members who attend these meetings to participate electronically and also then likewise affording members of the public the same opportunity to participate if we were to go that route. It just allows us to do that. Typically, we don't, but if we should ever do that, that would be an option. Any questions? The next policy is 3220.02. That's supplemental payment for teachers. As you probably recall, in the recent past, a couple of different times, we've, we've, under that relevant provision of the Indiana code, have allowed, have approved supplemental stipends for teachers that aren't subject to collective bargaining. Originally, it was for special ed and certain STEM positions, but now it's for virtually any teaching position. And so the revision that's recommended here is to just to simply allow the superintendent to make the recommendation, to, to put forth approval for supplemental stipends for any reason, for, for any type of teacher licensure, rather than specifically tie ourselves by listing various ones. So it's just. Any questions with that one? So under the Indiana code, again, originally, originally it was just certain special ed and STEM positions, but they've, they've since revised it so it can conclude, it can be a supplemental stipend for various types of positions. Like right now, we have supplemental stipends for, of course, school psychologists, but then very, special ed resource teachers like the 5'8" and really, and high school, as well as like high school chemistry, fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth grade math. There's a stip, supplemental stipend for a physics teacher. It's typically difficult to fill positions that are, tend to be in special ed and math and science areas. So that, but the law allows us to, to, for the superintendent to put forth a recommendation for board approval of those stipends such that we only have to take it in discussion with the teachers association. It isn't subject to collective bargaining. Yes. Right. And yeah, so I have been before you guys two different times, one with school psychologists originally and then another time with other positions. So those recommendations were put forth and then you guys approved it.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Sure.
Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to have, give an opportunity for board members to make closing comments. I'd like to start down there on the left side with Rachel, if you need.
Thank you. So it's a combination of closing and opening. So I've got a bit. It's always good to see Lowell here. All three of my kids attended Lowell, so it's always great to see updates from them. Science Olympiad placed second at regionals at the end of February. And then at state, placed second again this past weekend, which was actually pretty exciting because we beat the team that placed first at regionals by placing second. So that was pretty cool, that in two weeks, they put in enough work and polished up their skills enough that they were able to beat that team. I attended ISBA's day at the State House, as well as spoke at ICPE's billion-dollar bake sale rally on President's Day. One of the things that they had us gather information that they shared was that how much money your district has lost to vouchers since 2018? And our, for MSD of Warren Township, it's $13.5 million, which is just a huge amount of money that you think that we could have put to good use. I attended Warren Boys Basketball Senior Night and the first night of sectionals, as well as the launch for our public schools work. We had a media launch. Steve Inskeep spoke at the launch, so that was pretty cool. I had the opportunity to be on Indiana Lawmakers, which is produced by WFY, speaking on book banning and SB 12. And I would like to thank Julie for being one of the kind faces in the audience I could look to when I got nervous. Because that's always important that you have someone to look at in the audience. I learned how to drive a white bus, so that was fun. And I now have that ability. And then it is robotics season, so I have refereed and head refereed, including an event that the Digital Goats were at, but I will leave that for Julie. And then I also attended the school safety seminar put on by ISBA, as well as the community meeting that we had on Monday.
Thank you, Rachel. Terry?
Just want to thank everyone for being here today, especially Lowell, loves seeing the children. I love the chant. Also wanted to give a good shout out to our wrestlers that went to state, to our basketball teams, to all of our kids who really have been excelling in their extracurriculars. And just want to wish our teachers, support staff, administrators, a wonderful spring break.
Thanks, Terry.
You're welcome.
LaShana?
Well, everyone, it's been a long evening. I'm giving an update about WAVE and myself. I'll start with WAVE. We have only 25 seats left for the gala. So if you have not gotten your tickets, you better get them because we're cutting the numbers off. We are packed. This year, and the gala is April the 14th. I will use the word to say social hour starts at 5:30. And then the gala actually starts at 6:30. It'll go from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. And then this year is an after-party. So come prepared to have a little fun. With WAVE, we were able to give out two book vending machines. PNC, I attended the one at the Early Childhood Education Center. And the president of PNC was there, read to our scholars and gave them books. We also did a book vending machine at Sunny Heights. And a really cool thing, Delta Dental donated $25,000 to our dentist department for them to get an X-ray machine. One of the things that their instructor said is they still use the old school, but when they go out into the field, they don't have that experience of that modern technology. So she thinks, and she's going to verify, that we will be one of the first schools to have that. So I just wanted to put that shout out there. I attended the safety meeting as well, as well as working with our scholars who have struggled with attendance. But since they have started the attendance cohorts, the attendance have improved. And we have seen a lot of scholars who, they told me, may have been late one day is their thing, but they've been coming to school more. The safety meeting, I also attended with Rachel and Kevin and Marcus. My brain is sleepy. And the school forum, that was very good. That concludes LaShana's report and WAVE's. Thank you.
Thank you, LaShana.
I just want to say ditto. I, I attended the safety meeting also, and also our basketball games. And everything was just awesome. I just want to say thank you to everyone that gave a report tonight. I think you're doing an awesome job. Keep up the good work. And, you know, we'll say, go Warren. We are the pride of the East Side. Have a nice evening and a nice spring break. Thank you.
I would just like to thank everyone for their participation and all those out there working that we haven't been able to acknowledge. I know it's a lot of behind the scenes work going on and everyone doesn't get their name called. So thank you for caring. Thank you for working and God bless you and your family. And may we continue to grow and be successful.
Thanks, Kevin. Julie?
Yes, I would like to spend a couple of minutes talking about robotics. Imagine that. Digital Goats 829 had their first district event this past weekend, and they were runners-up, which is very good considering the hard work they were putting into trying to get the robot ready just the weekend before. So they did a nice job, and I'm very proud of those kids. And I'm going to keep it short because I know you guys want to go home. So I will see you after spring break. Have a nice one.
Thanks, Julie. Hey, just want to say it's been a great time, this last, last month or so. Have a great spring break. Meeting adjourned.